Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, March 16th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll call the meeting into order. First item of business this evening is the invocation of pledge. We do not have anyone signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to do an invocation for us this evening? Ms. Etheridge, would you like to do one this evening?
Okay. All right, we thought that we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the minute left here to say the prayers. We ask that you would continue to watch over our country, our state, our county, and the whole world as we're going through trying times right now. We ask you to continue to bless me for us, your faith, and your love and your kindness.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have a motion to approve the agenda tonight? Are there any changes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Just a reminder that public comment is three minutes. There's a light system up there. The green is go, yellow is speed up, and red is stop. This evening, the first person we have signed up is Karen Coleman, Coolman, excuse me.
Hi, we're all blessed.
Okay.
Karen Coolman, 172 Old Jerry Road, Moayok, North Carolina.
Yeah, I'm Jamie Coolman. Some of you know me already.
Our daughter Carly.
Hi Carly.
Hi. This is a little new to me. Give me one. I don't know. All right. Are they up? Okay. All right. So our property, we're here speaking about when some of the water eroded and the flood, continuous flooding from the development behind us. This is our property prior to flooding. We had the hurricane in September, which was devastating with the floodwaters coming over from the development, pumped over the ditch swell that was dug. Nice and dry. This is prior to it all, nice and dry. Come February the 7th, which we're coming up on, I'm just showing you what our property looks like. You see. This is the morning of February 7th. The picture to the left, this is what I woke up to. My husband had left for work, my daughter was in college. I woke up to this, water up to my knees. This is back behind our barn. Of course, I'm running all around trying to figure out what to do. This is behind our property before ditch line, before the tree line. This water goes to our front yard 20 feet from our back door now. This is February the 7th, the five inches of rain that we received. I put muck boots on to my knees. I have videos I could show you for days of me taking, I had to float that rubber tub, I put hay in that, tied a rope to it, had to float it. You see some horses in the right picture? I'm sorry, they're not great. My phone isn't. They're standing. I had to float hay in tubs to the horses. There was no dry ground for them to get on, period. No matter how much shell sand, how many number 10 stone, no matter how much sand I have had delivered to my pastures to try to build up for my horses over these conditions, and you can call Kurutuk sand, you can call threshers, and you can call salmons. I have receipts for tonnage. It's not helping. This is February the 7th, and then we're coming up, there's the barn, okay? Hurricane, it was in the barn. Here, it was very, very close in my back barn. All right, if you look here, where the swell is, excuse me, where the silk line is, that's the original cut from the development, the developers where they cut it. You can still see where the ditch line on the inside of the tree line has never been filled in. Now, if you look real close, that is the development's water. That's still their undeveloped property, and it's flooded back into our yard again, back into our pastures. That's where they cut the silk line. They dug a 30-foot trench in September. They never filled in on our side of the ditch, so even more water comes through now. That's the existing gap where you can see on the right picture, where they dug it with excavator, it came all the way through. This is how it floods into our property. It just comes up and over. Again, this is undeveloped property. See how high the land sits behind the wheat grass? Now, that is their ditch, and there were tannion ponds. This is their property. So they have a berm built on that ditch all the way down. This water can't even go over the berm, so it comes all to us. This is still going on. This was February the 7th. You saw the pictures of my morning and what I lived through. This is what my life is. This is my life. It's devastating. This is February the 8th. This is the next morning. This is still what I had. I could go on, go on. Now, everybody knows that there's flooding and this happens, but y'all don't live our life. You don't live on Old Jerry Road. It sits there. The property does not, excuse me, there's no drainage. And it's not because the front of our yards or our road ditch is clogged. That water comes from back there, and it sits. There's nowhere for it to go. The retention ponds were all trying to drain, and it's all self-draining into the ground absorption. It's not working. And I thought as you commissioners are as a whole or for the county, not for the developers, it's us who are suffering. What about us who've been there 20 years? Every time it rains, it's horrific. It can rain for two hours, and it's a matter of water sitting for days.
So just to be clear, you say this, so what happened prior to that development? You guys had occasional flooding under the worst of circumstances, I take it?
Might last three or four hours, and it's gone.
Okay.
This is lasting days now.
Our swells are our ditch lines, and we have them on both sides of our pastures. Not talking about the ones behind our property. We have more ditches, and they would fill, but it would drain three, four hours, and it would only reach it maybe two feet over or so.
Yeah, nothing like this.
I'm not sure if I can go back, if I can show you the front yard picture, if we got one of those in there. Okay, this one on the left, which might be your right, that's goes all the way to the front of our driveway. This one, where the fence, all the way to the front of driveway. That's my Jeep in the water. Not to mention the rust, that I'm not sure of the horse trailers. You see the camper? They're not that great. They're so dark. But there's a horse trailer, there's a Jeep. Let me see. Nope, I don't think it shows. All right, well, for instance, you see where the BMW, the horse trailer, blah, blah, blah. We have moved that stuff since because it's flooded, but the hurricane and this last, they were sitting in it. There was water. I have pictures in my purse. I'd be happy to break out. Where my Jeep is in the water, the BMW, my Honda Pilot, there's just nowhere to go, short of going out on our Old Jerry Road.
And you said that they, that trench that they had cut, they've never filled that back in?
They filled in the developer's side.
Right.
But not our side. So the trench was two feet deep?
Yeah.
Three feet, two feet. And it came all the way. They reconnect the silk. They filled in that side, and I even asked, I think Rachel, the inspector, was with me when we went through it a few times, and I said, please put in that they fill our side in as well to at least prevent that much water from floating, floating over, whether, you know, it got that far. This picture here, you can see our tree line right behind us, the ditch. It's just overwhelming. Now we have all of their floodwater with their chemicals have flooded onto our property once again. Now, you see our horses, they graze that pasture. They graze, and horses colic. They can't grow up. If it doesn't pass through, they get sick. We're asking, what we're saying is, how are we to keep living like this? What's going to happen when a real storm comes through?
You had a picture in there, I'm sorry, with that cut shown, I believe?
Yep.
Can you bring that back up again?
Sorry.
It's okay.
It's coming. This one you can see on the inside. It still has a swell. I can go one more forward and see if it's a better one.
Okay.
That's the original cut, and it came up to the silk. So this is probably where you're seeing, this on the inside of our property never got filled in. Now, the ditch, our ditch is in there somewhere. It's just flooded with water. Their water was just, this is February 7th, just coming over. The Stanleys, that's their property. They were flooded extremely bad as well, but we sit the lowest, and Eric Weatherly, he came out and walked the property, and he told me, he said, will you sit at the end? So of course, you're going to get, you're going to get it all from the two houses, and it's all coming at you. Bob Stanley, this was just draining like crazy from the undeveloped property across from our ditches. It was overflowing, just pouring onto his property. I think my husband.
No, that's about it, really.
I have so many more notes. It's.
It's affecting really the whole neighborhood. There's the three of them that are adjacent to the development. They get most of the flooding, but it is backing up the people across the street from us. They're getting flooding that they've never had. Of course, it's not really causing a lot of damage to them, but our concern is, you know, what is going to happen with this? Is this, can we fix this? This is definitely affecting, of course, the value of our property.
Not to mention, it's the land from all the water sitting on it continuously, it's just feels like it's dropping. I don't know, root rot, erosion, erosion on the ground. It's devastating. I could show you pictures of the Jeep when I first bought it last year, and right now, the rust. I can show you the body, the sides underneath, the rust that's just developing on all the wheel wells, the horse trailer. We are, we're not developers. We don't know how to fix the problem. We're trying to live with the problem, and we don't. It's not fair. Owen, I think you had a comment years ago about the public library when it was being built, that it was a horrific, the worst ever built project, potential for flooding, Moayok Library, because of the surrounding drainage does drain so poorly it could flood. That was when the library was put up. I mean, it's a fact. Flooding was that, you know, it poor drainage. And now we have this housing all the way back there. If you look at some of these pictures, let me go forward. Sorry, sorry. The green, that sits two feet high, higher now. It's just all been built up. This water, like I said, goes to that ditch line. There's a big berm. It can't go over the berm. It's not allowed to. It comes back on us.
So was that water, before that berm then, so that water was filling the ditch up and then dumping onto that land back there, is what you were saying?
There was a series of ditches in the farm fields.
Yeah, he had them cut everywhere.
That mitigated all of that. I don't know what has changed with the new design. Maybe it's not complete. We're not sure. I have a feeling the undeveloped farmland is probably now draining on us. That's those drainage that was put in for that is probably gone.
From the farmer.
It's rerouted to us now. It's probably what's happening, but can't be sure.
So all of your problems are coming from the back?
Oh, yes. All of them coming from the back.
Even my daughter, who, you know.
She's ready to go. You guys have raised her right.
Yeah, sure.
It's kind of a little reiterated, but I did write this, if you don't mind if I read it.
Get to the mic.
Yep. Point the mic over to her. There you go.
Okay. Hi, my name is Carly Martinet. I have been in Moayok for 10 years. My dad has been here for 20 or more years. When I first moved here, there was no construction and no new developments behind our house. All this recent development has caused nothing but negative effects for my family and I. Our yard is constantly flooded, and the water has nowhere to go. Our ditches are so full, they cannot drain. One heavy night of rain means we have weeks worth of flooded yard and pasture to look forward to. The ditch line behind our barn was not designed to hold floodwaters from the new neighborhood. I believe the neighborhood is called Waterfort?
No, Wentworth.
Wentworth, I'm sorry. Wentworth and Waterly. My family has eight horses on our property. Prior to all this flooding, we never had problems with our horses' hooves. The amount of money my parents have had to spend on vet calls to our house for hoof treatments, including white line hoof disease and hoof abscesses, is insane. My parents have had so much shell sand and dirt put in our pasture just to give the horses, or attempting to give the horses a dry place to stand, but they're constantly standing in water. Our house sits at least 50 yards away from the back of the tree line where the new development is, and we still flood up to our house and past our driveway. So now, so now, sorry, I ask you, how are we supposed to live like this when it only seems to be getting worse? Where's our compensation, and when are you all going to start caring about the residents who have been here for ages and less about the new developers? Thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
I spoke with the DEQ, you know, and he gave me basically, it's been approved. Hopefully they're going to get the drainage right, and it'll all get better, but for now, it's not. It works. It works, but it works for them, their drainage. It's not working for us. It's making life miserable. We have another hurricane season coming up, you know, August.
Can I ask the county manager a question? Didn't we send the staff out there for like eight or nine days in a row on the different stuff?
I don't know how many days staff was out there in, I guess it was probably September.
After the hurricane.
Yeah, it was a couple of days.
I was, I saw them, and we talked, and I got to walk the line, you know, just to learn what could be done. Like my daughter said, we've had to vet out twice for just one of our thoroughbreds who's had abscess, and it blew out on the bottom of its hoof, and that is from being in water. Now, when they blow out the top, it can be stomping, and when it blows out the hill wall, it could be something else. But it's a massive hole. He has to wear a boot. Every two days, we have to go un, get the boot off, take the banders off, and we have to sedate him every time, cut it off, clean it, bathe it in, and then try to rewrap it. It's every two days, and this has been going on for three weeks or more. I mean, he could be effectively go to his coronary van. It can keep going. And that's some sanding and water.
Can the county?
Get the vet bill from Coastal Equine.
Can the county engineer discuss this?
He can. He's here. Eric Weatherly's in attendance, and he can go into it a little bit if he wants to come up. As he comes up, I'll summarize what I think staff has, thinks is probably going on here. We've had many conversations, staff and the board, over the years. We had a conversation again at the retreat that we had in February about the fact that our current requirements are that a development holds the water generated on site to a certain level on site, and then sends it off at a level no greater than it was pre-development. And I'm oversimplifying there. One of the challenges, and it's one we talked about at the retreat, is that that does not take into effect upstream and downstream impacts from the development. And one of the reasons for that is, that was a requirement that was looked at, I think, many years ago, and the challenge is if you can't get access to properties, the engineers can't do the studies to a certain level. Eric can go into a lot more technical detail. Staff went out. We inspected this site thoroughly. I don't know that this site has called in for a final inspection on their stormwater infrastructure yet, so it may not be completed. Even if it is, the challenge, and I think that, I think that the vice chair payment kind of alluded to it just a little bit, the challenge is that water probably used to go into the farm field system from other properties. Well, our ordinance doesn't say that you have to continue to take water from other properties. It says that you can't release it on site at a greater rate. And I don't know if that's what's happening here. Eric can speak to that, but it sounds like from the pictures that the site has been built up, and then the question becomes that it used to take on more water than it currently does from other places. And there's also, I think, some challenges with drainage ways in general in Kurutuk County, and I think this ditch and where it ties into, I think Eric has walked that property. Now, your question, Commissioner McCord, about can the county engineer help? The county engineer can go out. Dylan Lloyd with Soil and Water Conservation can go out, walk ditches, make recommendations on improvements that could be made to ditches. But the challenge here is that there's probably land that used to receive off-site water that doesn't anymore. I mean, the pictures kind of allude to that. You know, you've got that large elevation change, and, you know, even in that rain event, and I'm, first time I've seen these pictures, it didn't look like water was shedding from the taller area over that edge of that hill down, but it probably used to absorb some of the water that was coming, maybe that backed up from that ditch. I don't know. But like I said, our county engineer has looked at the ditches in depth, so, in that area. So I'll turn it over to him if y'all have any technical questions.
Ms. Chairman Ford, engineer comes up. Why I said what I did about the library was that water went north behind that row of houses on Tallest Creek Road.
Yep.
And it was a small, narrow ditch, and then it crosses under Tallest Creek Road. And my concern was the outlet needed to be cleaned out in order to affect that water. But after the retention pond all got built, that is doing its job there now. I don't think we've had the flooding in that parking lot that we used to have there. Because when it first opened, it came clean up to the edge of the parking lot next to the library.
Yeah, before they demo, I mean, my company, and I mean like for me, or for whatever, not for, but we cut the library before, which the front of that is extremely wet. It's terrible soil, Owen can attest. I've cut your neighbors, and I've cut Bob's, and I've cut the alleys before, and Jim majority's across the road. I mean, it is typically low and wet anyway. But like he said too, I know the soil's horrendous too, especially on the library side. I don't know about your, never done a soil sample on your property.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Weatherly, come on up. Put you on the spot again.
Well, I have more questions than answers now.
Okay.
I, the drainage from that subdivision has to stay in that subdivision. So they dug a ditch, and then they built a berm as supposed to prevent.
Right. It coming over.
The water from coming over onto the neighboring properties. And so it appears that now your water can't release, and it doesn't have an outlet.
Let me, can I just back up one thing? Can I go back into those pictures? I don't know if there's one really here that's going to show us that.
Ah.
She's got control.
Oh, sorry, Laurie.
Some kind of plan, I think.
So, and I'm trying to get to this. All right. Our little ditch, which was designed for us. Oh, okay. Let me get back. This wheat field, I have so many pictures. I call it wheat, tall grass. It goes all the way, this is behind Bob Stanley's property. We're down from it. It goes further up, the development that's undeveloped. That's the water, and it comes all the way down from the alleys to where the end of the development is. It's undeveloped, so it all runs at us now. There's the ditch line with the berm. So this being all undeveloped, it sits so low, it just floods back. And I walked it with Bristol, the surveyors one day, they were out there, and I was like, look, it's as muddy as we are. It's as low as this property here, and this sits so high. He goes, yeah, they built the berm to protect the ditches. I said, but their water can't get into their ditches. It doesn't make sense. So our little ditch, which is designed for just basic draining by our tree line, now has to swallow all of the water from the development side.
Do the, is there, if I may ask, is there, and I walked it with Clay Cartwright. I went to school with Clay Cartwright when all this came out. I met him out there one day. Is there, what's the space in between, like, I see the silk fence and to the, if my right's going to be probably y'all's left?
If a foot toward ditch, if a foot.
I was going to say, I want to say 18 inches or something.
Yeah, it's not, it's not that much. You can, if you look really hard, you can see almost where the ditch, you know, begins and ends, kind of.
If we let Laurie bring up the plan, I think it'll bring a little clarity. And like I said, I'm not saying that the infrastructure has been installed completely yet. I mean, I don't, I don't know. Laurie maybe has an idea, Eric, but.
I confess, I haven't been out there since.
Yeah, I mean, so we.
I met, I saw you, but I introduced myself, and I made the meeting.
Yeah, what, when was that like?
Oh, that was in September. I made the meeting with you, and then you wanted to cancel it until you got your professional, you were all were hiring a new drainage specialist, and then we were supposed to.
And that's Dylan, is who. And so Dylan would look, we could send Dylan out. Dylan would look at two things. One is, like I said, I don't know that they finished the infrastructure on the subdivision yet, so if they haven't, then it's still in progress. But he could also examine the ditch and where it feeds to in the outlet and make recommendations for that ditch. Because part of the issue, it appears to be that whatever the ditch is, wherever the water, and I don't know, from Old Jerry Road goes in that ditch, it doesn't seem like it's moving enough water. I think that's probably.
The big ditch in the front.
There's a big ditch in the front that takes all the water out to Tallest Creek and it goes through the same system that the library goes through. There's a little, there's a little ditch behind our property that was just part of the farm field.
Yeah, that's what the market is.
So Laurie, what are we looking at up here that you brought up? So the.
This? This was the existing conditions of Glenmore Ridge that backs Old Jerry, the Old Jerry Road properties are along right here. And so this was the existing conditions. These are the four ditches, the farm field ditches. These four things were what drained the property originally, before they went in and graded and put in the stormwater plan. And there was also a ditch, sorry, I'm running out of space up here, along here that Eric and Rachel and I all went out and walked, correct, Eric?
Correct.
So this was the existing, this is what was prior to any development.
Okay.
Is there anything you want to?
You can pan down to the drainage and drainage plan.
The question I got is, how far is it from the silk fence to the berm?
I can tell.
That's like.
You mean the developer's ditch?
The silk fence and the berm that he's got, where you have all the green, 20 feet.
At least, but then it gets wider. There's so much undeveloped property. There's a lot of tall grass, and we can't, we used to walk back behind our lawn and wonder why, what is this undeveloped property for still sitting here when everything else?
This one?
And it kind of, the ditch that they dug comes straight behind our property, Stanley's, and then it veers out really wide, and goes back behind the alley. So the lowland undeveloped property just holds water, and then it runs onto us.
All right.
I bush hog Stanley's property that two days before the hurricane, and I mean, I went all the way up, and Bob could attest, he was here all the way through the ditch. It was, you know, it was dry. And there was water in the ditch, but I did bush hog two days before the hurricane. I think the hurricane was on Monday.
So Eric, what's on your mind?
You had a ditch in the back of your property and a ditch in the front of your property?
Where's her property in this map there?
Probably on the left corner.
Yeah.
Kind of here.
Right there in the bottom.
That's Jerry Road right there?
Yeah.
Yeah. So what you're looking at is the ditch in the development. There's a ditch and then the berm. All these contour lines are the ditch. So all that water carries it back internally to the subdivision for all those ditches.
There are ditches that they dug. They're nice and deep. Their berm holds their water there. There are retention ponds, which we're all fighting for drainage, natural drainage. So it's a constant, it's going to be forever with the ponds and their ditches and who can drain. Will obviously stay wet a lot longer. Their ditches were, their berms are holding their ditches up. It's still the undeveloped property that's flooding us.
What does that mean, undeveloped property?
Well, I call it undeveloped. It's the picture where the tall.
I'll see this code. So you're.
Outside the berm, yes.
Outside of the berm, behind our.
On your side.
Open space between the berm and the.
Exactly. And some of it gets extremely wide. It was, after February the 7th, I went back and shot pictures of it from our ditch line, how low it sat and how wet it was holding water. This is the development property that was undeveloped. It just, it's wet, it just holds water, just sitting there, not going to their ditch. holds water, just sitting there, not going to their ditch line or to the retention ponds.
Laurie, go back to the present, the conditions before the development real quick. So, something to point out, you've got that ditch at the bottom there, and then the one above there.
Right.
And so, water would flow from properties, and would probably flow into those ditches. And then if you go down, essentially, go down to the current, or, once it's finished. Now, you've got that ditch, which all the little lines at this very bottom of that is a ditch. That is a ditch right there. And so, what you see, the green, help me out, Eric, on the map, is the area on which side of that ditch?
The bottom side.
So, that ditch is on the other side of that berm that you see.
The bottom side is where we see the standing water. The green is the subdivision on the top side.
Right.
That's where it's all been built up.
So, what happens is water, like I said, it's probably an issue.
Trapped in that area.
Exactly, exactly. It's trapped.
But that's the open area that is trapped.
Where does the ditch that they dug to the, I'll say, the north side of the silt fence, where does that drain out? Where does that?
That pond you see on the right, and then the pond you see at the very top of the, oops, top of the page. There's another pond right there. You can see those lines going up and down. That's the ditch that brings it out to the pond on the north. So, it's got three ponds that go to each end and on the top.
Does it still go to the farmer's ditch, to Randy Langley's property? It's not his property that he farms it, all the way on the west end?
This, this water now drains out by the library, and by, it goes up north on Tolls Creek Road and out by Waterly. So, it has two outlets. But it doesn't drain out the ditch by Old Jury Road.
So, Eric, where does the Old Jury Road ditch run?
So, there's a, there's a ditch along Old Jury Road. It goes to Tolls Creek Road. There's a driveway right there. It goes through a culvert. It turns north along Tolls Creek Road, and then about, probably about 500 feet, there's a culvert underneath Tolls Creek Road that it releases. So, it goes to swamp across Tolls Creek Road.
I'll bet you that culvert's eighteen inches, if it's like Owens.
Well, yes. So, I have ideas. I'd like to work, I could work with the folks, and, but still, is cleaning out ditches on their property, that's gonna take the solution, I think, to.
Okay, I have a question on that.
You say on their property, you're talking about?
Yeah, this back ditch and the one on Old Jury Road.
So, the one that's on the inside of the silt fence?
Yeah. But I'm not exactly sure if that one has a good outlet like the one on Old Jury Road.
The one behind our property goes down, to the right, to the left. I mean, it just flo, you know, one goes straight out Old Jury, then we have the other ditch that goes down the other side of our property, where there's still a small bit of farm field right there. But those ditches were designed not to take floodwaters. Those are our ditches just to keep our pasture supposedly dry. Those aren't there to have the undeveloped property drained in them.
So, how did it use to drain then?
We never flooded like that.
How did it use to drain?
The ditches behind the berm?
The ditch along the back of your property?
That's well, behind the berm, by the tree line?
Yes.
The back property. And where did that ditch drain to?
That ends up into the front, the front, um, Old Jury Road.
So, there you go. It needs to go out Old Jury Road.
Right.
And I believe with some maintenance, would help a long ways toward that.
So, and I want to make sure expectations are clear, because it's an important conversation to have here. This is not in a service district. So, any maintenance that's done to those ditches would be the property owner's cost, because there's no service district, and the county cannot maintain those ditches. So, any clearing, any snagging, picking and pulling, like you heard the other night, anything like that that's gonna happen, any culvert replacements that would need to occur to make bigger culverts, currently, that would be under the cost of the property owners.
Mm-hmm.
On the Old Jury Road subdivision?
Yeah.
Yes, on our side. But I don't understand if it's the floodwater coming from behind and going through the silt onto our property. Why would it be the homeowner's responsibility to make it work?
The, and this is where I was, I kind of was discussing before Eric came up. So, the challenge is that the current regulations require a development to take the water from that development, and not let it run off at a greater rate than it would pre-development. They have met that global requirement. And the issue, and I think that this, and Eric can support this or not, you can let me know if I'm way off base, I think the issue is that before that berm was put in, and that ditch was put in, the water, once your ditch got to capacity, some of it would come on your property, but a lot of it probably flowed into that farm field. And so, now that that has been raised, it's not that they're taking water from their property and putting it on you. It's that the property they've developed can no longer, is no longer absorbing water it used to absorb. I think that's really the issue. And we've had discussions, like I said, staff with the board, about requiring developers to do upstream and downstream analysis. But the challenge there is that in some cases, you have people who will not allow engineers access onto their property to do that analysis. And that's something the county's talked about, I think, for many years. But it's always, it always comes back to the same challenge, that if you can't get access, you can't do a good study. And if you can't do a good study, you can't, the engineer can't say upstream and downstream, this is the impact, which is why we have the regulation, that the development is required to hold water up to a certain point, and meter it out at a certain rate. In this case, I said, because if the development had water that was flowing back onto you in large quantities, you'd have water cascading over that green berm. The issue is that the water seeks a level. It gets over the ditch. It used to go up, I believe, and like I said, Eric, jump in and tell me if I'm wrong, because we have discussed this. The water reaches, gets up, instead of flowing into the farm field and into those farm ditches like it used to do.
Right, closing our property.
Right. But it's water that, it's water that, it's not water generated on the subdivision. It's water that backs up the entire ditch line. And it's a challenge for Currituck County as a whole, I think, to find a solution for ditch maintenance.
I'm not understanding, because that is, that is development property back there. It's a small acre or two of undeveloped that retains water that floods us. And it's our responsibility, you're saying? Why? Why do I have to wake up in the morning?
But I think, I think what Ben's saying is, the developer didn't flood your property with the neighborhood, right?
The way it was developed, or underdeveloped, or not properly drained, there's a problem.
Right, well, that.
It's, we have.
But you're catching water from elsewhere coming down that ditch, from surrounding properties around you as well, that are to the west of you flowing down, going east towards the sound. So, you're catching water that normally would have been absorbed onto that property. And there's no way to make him catch that, capture that water coming downstream without knowing.
Why don't they just dig, uh, dig themselves a nice ditch line to their ditches again? I mean, they dug it at the hurricane, right to our line. They cut the silt, hit twenty foot, seven foot wide drainage ditch, and flooded us out in the hurricane. Why don't they just reverse it, cut their ditches open, and let it drain back into their ditches?
Well, that's a bigger question, I think.
Yeah.
We can't answer tonight.
It's just not right. It's not right that we have to live like this. It's not. It's not every.
I think what Eric is alluding to, Jamie, you say you've been there 20 years, is that ditch behind your barn?
It's never flowed out.
Never.
No, the question is, has it ever been cleaned out or maintained since you've been there?
We go back there with rations and shovels, and we pull the branches, cause it's water.
But anywhere else?
I haven't done it down at the other neighbor's house, but it's all close to me anyway.
How about, yeah, everybody runs, you're the neighbor's, everybody runs from you. How about east, east of you, like where you're, like, when you come down Old Jury Road, you're right there on the right, first on the right?
Right.
How far is it from the edge of your property line to, I guess, to that ditch to the end? What is it, maybe 150 yards?
Probably.
Now, who owns that? Is that, is that a lot, or is that just open area?
Someone used to farm it.
Somebody farmed it. We don't ever flood from over there. It's, it's great.
But you're at the low farm, they can't get out past east of y'all heading towards the sound.
Right, right.
But I've been saying, who, does somebody still farm that? I think so. I mean, I know somebody farmed it last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Corn.
Maybe not the whole, yeah, not the whole thing.
Staff will be happy to go out and inspect and make sure that, once again, things are put the way the plan.
I think we need to send somebody out there. If somebody put a development behind my house right today, and flooded me, I'd feel just like these people do. That is not right that developments come and flood your property out.
I mean, Eric is saying, but, I mean, like I said, I mean, I, and I've cut all those properties there, and like I said, I feel for Jamie and them. But like I said, the east of him, headed towards the sound, that last 150 yards is, is really the, you know, that ditch, and I mean, and that, how it was designed was, you know, he can't run water on them.
So, I think send somebody out, and see if we can't work with the developer to be a good neighbor. I think the developer, as well as the.
We're not asking for much. We just need the water to stop flowing on.
If, just dig a ditch and drain it.
Cut us a ditch from behind.
I think everybody would be happy.
Down to the front of Old Jury Road, so we can get better.
So, we can go out.
It's not a plan. We need it, because we'll never be able to sell our property. And not that we would ever sell a flooded piece of property in our right mind. It just wouldn't be fair to anybody purchasing it. We'd have to sell it in dry summer, because, and the paperwork, when you see real estate, does it hold water? It's, you know?
So, what staff can do is send somebody out, take a look, come up with a plan. Now, the challenge, from that point, staff will be done. We can't, we're not gonna be able to require anybody to do anything, probably, especially if the infrastructure's been installed according to the plan. But we are happy to go out and help devise a plan that would help. But it's gonna be up to a conversation between the folks on Old Jury Road and the developer to come to some kind of understanding, if, if everything on that development is installed and passed according to the plan that was proposed.
I think that would be a good start, to send somebody out.
Determine who owns that property, who owns that property that's undeveloped going out toward Tolls Creek Road, if you can get across now.
That's what I was asking, that, Jamie, you guys own that?
Hey, Eric?
I'll, I'll see you soon. I'm always home. I'm always behind my ditch. I'm always looking at the property, what's going on. I always see the farmer when he goes out to fertilize and see.
If the berm was basically on the property line, right, so that area of water outside of their ditch, if that berm went all the way to the edge of the property line, that's not where their flooding is coming from. Their flooding is coming from somewhere else.
Right.
And that's flowing, and as I understand it, what's changed is, that excess water
Has been redirected.
Has nowhere to go, and they're, they're feeling the brunt of it. But it's not, it's not the natural area, it's not the green space. That's not your problem. But, so when you're looking at that, that's not where your problem's coming from.
No, not at all. It doesn't, that's, they're nice and dry over there.
No, no, no. The, the water that you see on your side of the berm is not why you're flooding. Okay? That's just a symptom of water that's coming from somewhere else.
From somewhere else.
So, and it's not their property that is forming that water outside of that berm.
Right.
Right? So, it's not the development that's causing that excess water. That water is coming from outside of their development, because they put up a dike, right, or berm, whatever. They're controlling, and that's, because that's what our ordinance says. They're not allowed to flood the neighboring territory. But that water's coming from outside of their development, and where it used to retain onto, onto that track, because they're required to retain their own water, they can't absorb the water that's coming from, from the.
Their ditch line and their berm, it, like I was mentioning, behind our property, it's nice and straight, behind Stanley's straight, and then it beers out, comes around to Ally's property. You, I don't have the pictures loaded there.
It's not a straight line.
It's not a straight line, and where it beers out, comes around, that's where it floods. Like, why was it left undeveloped? Why was it not?
The design of the property.
That, that's where it backs up to, doesn't, isn't that where it backs up to Randy, where Randy Langley farms?
No, that's not down there yet.
You said, that's where they cut the ditch.
It backs up further down from.
Close to Randy.
If you go to this, whoop, the other back ditch.
That wall.
This is the ditch that you're.
Right there, that little triangle to the right, is what she's talking about. At the bottom.
Bottom, right.
Yeah, that right there is what she's talking about.
So, all of that comes down on us.
That's not cutting your foot.
Exactly. It's, it's, Glenmore was about a foot and a half to 70, a little bit, so it used to receive all their water. It's the, it's the problem. And, and that ditch does have a lot of mature trees in it for their outlet. And it's a shared outlet. So, that, that farm is always draining into the Old Jury Road ditch. However, when it reaches the point, you know, obviously, if it's a foot and a half lower, it's gonna go on to Glenmore, as opposed to in the backyard. Now that we've, we've met the ordinance, and we've burned out, you know, to meet the 100-year storm, the only thing that can receive water now is that little triangle, before it hits our berm, then the rest of it goes to them.
I get the problem.
So, it's not, it, it's, I think Mr. Jamie said it first, the problem was, is that the farm was, was receiving your water. Now, we've met our state and county ordinance requirements, we're holding our water, and now you're seeing like the effect of it, and the ditches that receive in the back of Old Jury Road are staying full of mature trees, and they're really under, under maintenance. So, it's.
Let's get, let's get somebody out there.
We'll be more happy to, I mean, we've been inspected since the time already, what's the end? I mean, so, I mean.
Well, I don't think that, the bigger, the underlying, is what's going on with their ditch. Where is it going? I think that's what Eric can come out and look at and go, okay, if we do this, this, and this, we can provide a lot more relief, right? And that, or at least have some, right?
And it's eighteen inch, it goes to like an eighteen inch pipe.
Yeah.
That ditch is rough. I mean, I don't, I'm not saying your section in general. I'm saying as, as a whole.
Right.
I mean, it's got trees in it.
So, staff will send someone, will send somebody out from staff, they'll help develop a plan that could potentially help. And where that plan goes is gonna be up to the different parties involved. All right.
But with the development, now it's going to cost us not just in material, trying to find dry spots for the horses, or just us walk on. Now, it's our responsibility, because the water is coming from elsewhere, not the development. Now, we have to maintain, get out there, either hire somebody, or physically, which we'll probably have to do, physically do it, because we don't have that money. Fix it. In 20 years, we've never had water.
In, in other places in the, in the county, the, the solution that has come up over the years has been that the folks who are in a certain drainage area, so everybody that shit, whoever puts water into that ditch, would get into a tax service district, taxes are raised, and the county goes under contract with a contractor to periodically maintain that ditch. We have, I think, seven of them at this point around the county. And it will probably continue to be something that we talk about in the future, not just here, but other places. And as we've talked about, upstream and downstream analysis is the only way that you avoid this kind of situation.
If there was a service district in that area where they're on Old Jury Road, how far would that go down? Would it go down to Old Tolls Creek?
I don't know.
Yeah, but, but I don't know that upstream analysis would, would really have done anything here.
This wasn't their outlet. It wasn't looked at.
It seems that their water was probably shit flowing over to the farm.
To another spot that I wish they'd done.
Right, upstream analysis, exactly.
It's a different direction.
So, that, even, even doing that would not have prevented this?
No.
That's right.
So, staff will go out, help devise a plan, give that plan to the parties involved, and see if they can come up with, with some kind of solution amongst themselves. But it will involve more than just cleaning a small section of ditch, probably. It will involve a major ditch maintenance program.
Can I ask one more question? To, to the coolman, the triangle where we, where the water's holding, where you showed the picture, whatever, where's Bob Stanley's, is Bob Stanley's house? Is it even with the little cul-de-sac, looks like a, a barbell, the, the two? Where's Bob Stanley's property?
Stanley would be, he'd be down near the point of the triangle, to the, to the right, to the right.
He's in the house, because alleys are at the very.
Alleys are at the end, and then he would be somewhere to the right.
It's behind his.
Most of the water's coming across his, his piece of property, of course, it ends up on us.
It ends up on you.
Yeah. So, there you go. It's, so, water's coming from your neighbor, right? You just said that, is that correct?
No, it's coming from the development side. It floods right into his.
Can't, they can't. They're retaining their water, it's not coming off a development.
Coming from outside, they've held.
Right. And you're, you're catching everybody else's water that's upstream of you, basically.
Right, and that's what Eric has said, that we will catch the blunt of any drainage problem, or any undeveloped property.
All right, so the, the first, I think we've probably beat this horse, pardon the pun. But, so the county's gonna send out some staff. Let's find out where your water's going, what's going on, and, and look at how to devise a plan. Because it's not necessarily the developer's fault. If that ditch has been flooding for years, and flowing out onto what is now the development, you guys had your, the luxury of having that water go somewhere else onto someone else's property.
you guys had your, the luxury of having that water go somewhere else onto someone else's property.
I call that luxury.
Well, it was a luxury at that time. Now it's not, right? So, but, and, and so now it's, it's, it's raised a problem. Now, I'm not unsympathetic to your problem. None of us are here. We, we recognize it is a big deal for you guys. I mean, and so that's why we're, we're going to get the county engineer out and look at how we can help you guys out in whatever way we can as the county government.
Can we possibly do that? And this is asking a lot, but when my husband is off from work and I'm there too. So we can walk with that?
Eric's kind of nodding his head, yes. So he's going to be, yeah, so. So we'll, we'll, we'll work with you as best we can to help resolve as much of the problem as we can.
Just make sure you're, that Eric has somebody's contact information.
I'll have it. Just make sure you have boots on.
Eric's got boots. Yes, ma'am.
He's got hip waders. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Well, since that was all three people I had signed up at one time, is there anyone else that'd like to speak at public comment tonight? All right. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Move on to the next agenda item. Which is Commissioner's report. I'll kick it off tonight. Uh, the board met this, uh, early this afternoon with, uh, co-op, folks at Cooperative Extension and their staff, the report to the people. Just wanted to give them a shout out and thank you for having us over and feeding us this evening. They have a terrific staff and do a lot for us in this county. Um, and if you are in 4H or interested in it, um, get involved with them. They have a Medicare liaison. It's pointed out that that person helps save over $250,000 for our folks that are on Medicare and how, helping them navigate that. So if you are a person that's on Medicare, Medicaid, go see them, Medicare specifically, go see them. Um, they can help you out and navigate those murky waters. The Master Gardeners also work out of there as we're talking about stuff with COVID and food sources and everything else going on in this country. Might not be a bad time to pick up your gardening gloves this year and start a garden. So I would implore you to get with them. And the Master Gardeners are always looking for new people to get involved with that. And, uh, they do a good job and, um, get some, they've got all kinds of stuff planted over there to help you get started. And looking at some of the information they provided us, the Currituck County Rural Center has had quite a few events that we've had people question that over the years while we have it, what we're doing with it. And, um, it, it is, uh, most events average over 250 people, several of them over 500 people, and our bowls and barbecue over a thousand people. The place is booked just about every weekend during the season for horse shows and 4H events and, uh, has been an asset to the county. So, um, if you're on the south end of the county, stop on into CCRC. It's a great public park as well with a playground and some water access. This evening you'll hear the county manager speak about the coronavirus, otherwise known as COVID-19. We're going to make some recommendations. He will present those. But, um, uh, I, I would urge everyone to just realize that we're doing that in an overabundance of caution. It may seem a bit extreme, but it probably isn't, given the outcome of this and, and the people that it could affect. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Payment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Last week I had the opportunity to go to a alcohol abuse event at the Moyack Middle School. Part of the ABC store profits in the county, a portion of that has to go to the school systems for substance and alcohol abuse. And one of the ways that, um, the, the ABC Board has decided to is to support a program called Sold Out, where a gentleman by the name of Roman Gabriel III, um, he, um, he developed this program to come into the school systems and present a program, talk to the students there about the effects of abuse, child, alcohol abuse, drug abuse, what it can do. He brings in speakers from high levels of actors, other professional football players, Patrick Mahomes, individuals like that. And he gets the students to do a pledge, um, and sign up where they constantly get emailed. They're constantly interacting with the, with the group and the schools. And then they come back yearly and, and refocus. So it's a good program. I really enjoyed the, uh, the, I looked in the audience. I saw all the students participating, raising their hands about committing to this program, just staying focused. And it was, it was good to see that, that we're working with our, um, our, our young adults and getting them to understand the effects that, um, drinking and alcohol and drug abuse can, can have on them. So that was very exciting to see. And that's going to be a continuing support of the ABC Board. And secondly, there was a, the fire this recently at the lower end of the county, Lower Currituck and, and other responded to that. And I do want to say that the reports from, from the, from that is that there was good water flow, good response. The apparatus worked well. They were able to contain the fire to the one home and they saved the surrounding structures. And everyone I spoke to was very, very pleased with the outcome of that. And I just wanted to commend the, uh, everyone involved, the fire departments, the, uh, police, Sheriff's Department, the EMS and, and every, and telecommunications as well. So it, uh, it was, uh, it was good work from our volunteer firefighters. And that being, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Etheridge? No comments tonight. All right. Mr. Beaumont?
Nothing for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Corrigan?
I did attend the, um, the thing that Mike was talking about. I didn't get to attend the whole thing because I was on duty. But we were asked to be at the middle school in Moyack. He was there as well, which was a really, really good program. I only got to see about fifteen minutes of it. A lot of good stuff goes on in the county and sometimes, you know, like I said, people don't even know about it. But, um, that was a really, really good program. Like I said, unfortunately, we got a call and I had to leave. But, um, congrats to the elections with all the coronavirus, you know, all going on. Congrats to Commissioner Beaumont, Commissioner Etheridge, um, for their wins. And, and Commissioner Jarvis, I was, sorry, Selena. But yeah, like I said, anybody that won or anybody that, that is brave enough to run, because social media gets real. I mean, every one of us sitting up here have been beat on or abused by somebody behind a keyboard or a cell phone. And, um, they typically probably wouldn't say it to your face. But, you know, like I said, I commend anybody that is brave enough to put their name on the line and sign the check to, to run. I think you should get paid to have to run. But, um, but like I said, that. And, um, everybody, like, the next few weeks, whatever, I mean, everything's changing. It's going to be, you know, a wreck. My father's going to call me 25 times a day because he can't be at the senior center, but that's going to be my struggle. Like I said, make sure you wash your hands and take care of yourself. And if somebody needs something, like I said, you know, call our, you know, our dispatch. I know with some of the children, we were talking about that today at the Sheriff's Department, far as their, um, you know, some of the kids rely on a lot of the programs, the free lunches, and I know the schools are addressing that. The backpack for kids, which we assist at the Sheriff's Department for getting kids, that's, some, some of those kids, and like, people don't know, it's probably about eighty kids in the county, that that's the only food that those kids get on the weekend is the food that we deliver from the local sponsors and all that other stuff. There's a lot of people that put a lot of time, Currituck Kids and everything. I could name a million different people, but that's a good thing. And the fire, the, uh, Lower Currituck and the surrounding agencies that assisted, those guys did a good job. They saved all the surrounding properties. Um, that was, um, you know, like he's, like Commissioner Payment said, excellent job. Those guys work hard and it's a thankless job. But, um, you know, to those guys, and that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Etheridge?
Yes, I attended the Crawford Township Volunteer Fire Department's Award banquet. And listening to the amount of time and effort that these individuals put into training, time that they take away from their families, um, it's really impressive. And I'm also impressed by the families themselves who allow their loved ones to be involved in it. And the fireman of the year happened to be a lady this time. And she's a single mom with three kids. And the amount of hours she puts into training was quite impressive. And there was the junior firefighters that were awarded for their action. These are the kids at the high school that get involved in the volunteer efforts. Really impressed by it. And my hat's off to all our volunteer firefighters. We are blessed in Currituck County that these individuals are dedicated to the public that they serve. And we should all pat them on the back every chance we get. In regards to the COVID-19, we have to use some common sense with this. Normal precautions that we should be doing anyway, we should continue to do and maybe double up on them. But one other thing I think we should do as individuals is pray to our Heavenly Father that he'll spare the most of us the issues that could come about this. Prayer is always good. And I urge everybody to take part in that and be thankful for the blessings that we have and ask for continued blessings on Currituck County and the state of North Carolina and our country. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Jarvis, I didn't forget about you.
Okay, well, thank you. It's okay. According to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, in 2018, North Carolina had 854 calls to their hotline and 287 cases of human trafficking reported. Several of those cases were here in northeast North Carolina. North Carolina ranks 10th in the nation for the number of human trafficking cases. These were just some of the sobering statistics that were shared with the Northern Region Trillium Advisory Board meeting on Tuesday. Pam Strickland of the North Carolina Stop Human Trafficking presented a warning, presented warning signs, statistics, and other helpful information about this troubling trend in North Carolina. Red flags and warning signs of human trafficking include signs of physical and sexual abuse, isolation from family and friends, branding tattoos, lack of control of money and their schedule, just to name a few. If you know someone who is potentially a victim of human trafficking, you can call the national hotline at 1-888-373-7888. Through education, collaboration, fair trade, and advocacy, we can work to abolish human trafficking. And they gave several handouts. Um, several of these will be in schools. But they include the warning signs as well as the 800 numbers, uh, to help this very real problem. And our own Sheriff's Department has done great work on this as well, trying to educate, um, our community because many people think it can't happen here. But after the stories we heard, they are here and they're happening here. And last, I want to give a shout out to our county manager. He gave a great informational and, um, just a thorough handling of the community recycling meeting in Corolla last Friday. He professionally and honestly answered every single question that those citizens had. And at the very end, they gave him a huge applause. Uh, and it's a very difficult subject. But the way this meeting was handled, I think it put us all at ease and gave us the realization that together we can be a part of a more effective recycling program going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And one other thing before I turn it over to the county manager for his report. We were given some preventative measures on COVID-19. And I just wanted to pass along a couple of websites for those of you that are interested in getting some more information. From something as simply as diluting bleach or cleaning up after, if someone in your family, a loved one becomes infected, what do you do afterwards? So that information is available at go.ncsu.edu/cdcgloves. And you can go to the cdc.gov site as well. They have a special page set up within that with information, obviously, for the coronavirus. And with that, I will turn it over to the county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, obviously, uh, the entire nation, entire world is in the midst of a COVID-19 pandemic. You've seen actions taken by various communities across the state and local governments included across the state of North Carolina. Today you had Dare County enact a state of emergency. I've put together a list of recommendations that would be effective tomorrow, March 17th, for Currituck County to help do our part to flatten the spread curve that the CDC talks about. And I wanted to go through those in depth and answer any questions that you all had and then look to the board for some guidance about these recommendations. The, the first would be that tomorrow, March 17th, we would close the senior centers and libraries to the general public. The purpose of this is to protect our most vulnerable population group with the spread of this disease. It, it definitely impacts the elderly at a much higher rate than the rest of the population. We would, during that time, try to find a way for the library to be useful to the school system. We have, um, schools are going to be out for at least two weeks and CDC guidelines may push that out even further. If they do, we have students who are going to have to use virtual learning. And so by, there's a potential that the libraries can be used. So I would be closed, the general public potential limited use by students who don't have access to the internet. The library could still maybe try to find a way to provide some, um, remote book pickup and drop off because as we go through this, folks are going to realize that some of the entertainment options they had available to them before may or may not be available. I would also recommend that we close the welcome centers to the general public. I would also recommend that we make a shift in communications, our 911 center, so that we can split the shifts so that they won't be located. We have a backup center. That way they could work out of both locations so that we could, um, help keep the staff separate so that if we do get an infection in that, um, group of workers, it doesn't go through an entire shift because we only have three to four on shift at a time. And so it could be really detrimental to our public safety response if we keep them grouped together. The, I would also recommend that we require all interactions to be done online if available through the county. Some of the main ways that this could impact people in our construction industry, all building permits, zoning permits, plan review can be done online. I understand that it's not the, um, the way that a lot of people want to interact with that process. We appreciate that. But by limiting the interaction between people, we feel like we can do our part to flatten that curve for the spread of COVID-19. During that time, we would also ask that if you have, if you want to see a county staff member in another building, you make an appointment and you come at your appointment time. The other recommendation would be that, um, we no longer allow walk-ins in the buildings. So we would have single spots throughout the county in each of the buildings where meetings could occur. After the meeting's over, that area is sanitized and then the next person could come in. We also make a recommendation that during this time, we allow county employees, and there's a, there's actually a draft change to the personnel policy, if you all see fit tonight, that would make that, this change, to allow all county employees to use sick time for any reason that they need to be off for, during the duration of the declaration of emergency due to COVID-19 from the state of North Carolina. We would also ask that employees be able to essentially use sick time even if they haven't accrued it so they could accrue a negative balance. That balance, if they do separate from the county, would be made up through vacation and comp time that they have available. I would recommend that all county events be canceled for the next month where it is a public event. We have several throughout the county at the library, several through cooperative extension, several in tourism and parks and recreation. I recommend that we cancel all non-county events held on county property for the next month. We have some of our facilities that are rented out. And I would make a recommendation that from now until April 17th, all of those properties, if they have events on them that aren't county events, be canceled. I'd also recommend that we cancel all advisory board meetings for one month. So Planning Board, Veterans Board, FIAB, all the advisory boards that are non-statutory that have to meet, we cancel those. I don't believe there are any that would be required to meet through this because of the state of emergency that the state has declared. I would also make a recommendation that we reduce the board of commissioner meetings to one in the month of April, preferably the second meeting in the month of April. That way it gives us a full month of soak time to see what happens with COVID-19. If we need to get together sooner, we can call an emergency meeting. We can call a special meeting. But I think that the business of the county as usual can hold until the second meeting in April. These recommendations are not done lightly. Um, they, they are not done in a knee jerk reaction. We spent a lot of time over the last weekend reading these recommend, thinking about these recommendations, getting the public safety staff together, getting staff that interacts with the public together. And we think that these are the best ways that we can make an impactful change to try to limit the spread throughout the county. It also is a step to take to ensure that county employees can still maintain the functions. It is very important in an event like this to make, for the local governments to be open for business. I understand it won't be business as usual. I understand that it won't be as convenient as usual. But we will be open for business. Um, there are obviously various departments such as public safety, sheriff's office, EMS, fire, communications. They're required, they're essential employees. And water treatment, I mean, you don't think about those, those folks. We have got a lot of employees who will be, um, who will be required to be at work and will put themselves potentially at risk to exposure to this disease to be able to help the citizens of this county. It is unlike anything that local government has experienced in a very long time in the state of North Carolina and in our country in general. I think that while we don't have a case in Currituck County right now, there's no known cases, no confirmed cases, haven't had any report of a case in Currituck County. These are measures that are be taken, as I said, to try to flatten the curve so that it gives more time for vaccines to be developed, for testing to be rolled out, and for infrastructure to catch up. And I'd be happy to answer any. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board of Commissioners maybe have about any of these policies and recommendations.
I was going to ask the question, is that, I know that's for county-wise. Is that, is the schools, I know they are shut down, I guess, for two weeks, and they were going to reassess, and they had talked about moving their spring break. Is there, have we had any?
The, I haven't had a communication about the spring break. The state of North Carolina actually suspended all schools across the entire state for two weeks, beginning today.
I suspect we'll see that added to.
It would not surprise me if that gets added to, but once again, I haven't had any communications with the schools or with the state about that. That falls solely under the jurisdiction of the governor at this time. That was not a decision by the local Board of Education, but rather a mandate put out by the governor, along with the mandate, that it is a misdemeanor now in the state of North Carolina to have a public gathering of more than 100 people. And so I want folks to understand that there are laws in place right now that the governor has put in place to restrict that kind of gathering. As well, the CDC has reduced their recommendation that groups of more than 10 should not get together. You should have no groups of people larger than 10 together. Once again, it's done to try to, it's important to understand the reasoning behind it. It's not done to scare folks. I don't want people to be afraid. What this has done is to prevent the spread, to take the spread of the disease, which may still spread, likely will still spread, but to make it take longer, so that our science and technology and medical infrastructure can ramp up to be able to have a major impact before it becomes widespread, like you've seen in China and Italy, for example.
Okay. Any further comments or questions for the manager?
I liken the abundance of caution to when we order an evacuation for a hurricane. You do it in anticipation that it might hit, and you want to protect the traveling public as well as the people here in the county. And if nothing happens, then we did the right thing, regardless. And as someone who's been involved in that in the past and got cussed out for ordering an evacuation, I always said that we should always err on the side of caution.
So the action that I need from the board tonight is just general guidance on most of these. You do have, in the packets I hand out, you have a draft policy for the personnel policy. I do need a motion to amend it that specifically puts the sick leave policy into effect, as long as the state has a declaration of emergency for COVID-19 in place.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the recommendations as presented to us by the county manager. Thank you. A second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Stichler?
Two, I have wrote down the 17.
One month, so most of those go, the things go into effect tomorrow, and they will run until April 17th.
Okay.
And if something changes, we can reevaluate between here and there.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. Item A, consideration action, PB 90-07, Pine Island Phase 5, request for preliminary plat use permit for a 23-lot planned unit development on Audubon Drive, tax map 128, parcel 2H, Papa Branch Beach Township. And with that, I believe I need to re-swear everybody in that'll be part of this. If you all would come on up to the podium and place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. You all solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to be give will be truthful and honest.
We do.
Thank you. All right. So we've heard this item before. Just as a recap, at that time, the applicant did not have any expert witnesses with them, and so we put it on hold till this meeting to allow them the time to get an expert in here to speak for them. Ms. Turner, did you have anything you were going to speak to tonight?
Well, I can't tell if that mic is on.
It's on.
Is it on? Okay. Well, I was just going to recap. I'm not sure that everyone was here at the last meeting when we heard this, so I was just going to recap.
Thank you.
The whole thing, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right. So the applicant is requesting preliminary plat use permit approval for a 23-lot residential subdivision on undeveloped Phase 5B in Pine Island. And the subject property is approximately 25 acres, and it's located south of the Hampton Inn in Corolla. Property is zoned SFO with PUD overlay, and in September of 2019, the board approved an amended sketch plan use permit for the Pine Island Plan Unit Development to allow Phase 5B to be developed as a 23-lot, single-family dwelling lot subdivision. All the surrounding property is zoned SFO with PUD overlay, and also subject to the approved amended sketch plan for Pine Island. Here's the preliminary plat, again, 25 acres, about seven acres of open space. It meets the overall open space requirements for the PUD. The project consists of 13 oceanfront lots and 10 semi-oceanfront lots. Community water access is proposed in the open space to the north and the south. The north side will have a cabana, parking, and cluster mailbox units. A sidewalk is proposed along the new streets, and it will connect to the existing path along NC 12. The project will be served by county water and private wastewater. Private gated streets are proposed at each entrance, and a bridge crossing is proposed over the stormwater pond to connect the existing access on the north end of the property. Canopy trees will be planted per the ordinance requirements. The state's stormwater plan will be amended to accommodate the development. Stormwater will be managed on-site through expansion of the existing pond and conveyance via roadside and lot line swales to that pond. And the applicant will pay a fee in lieu of recreation and park area dedication that will be approximately $270,000. This is a use permit, and these are the four findings that the board will need to, or the applicant will need to demonstrate to the board. Those last two findings, that the use will be in conformity with the land use plan and county plans, and not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, are typically review standards that staff takes responsibility for presenting. The land use plan classifies the site as full service within the Corolla subarea, and the proposed use of a residential subdivision is in conformance with Housing and Neighborhood Policy HN1, that Currituck County shall encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for the location, and HN3, that Currituck County shall especially encourage open space developments that cluster homes on less land, preserving permanently dedicated open space, and often employ on-site or community sewage treatment. And the other finding is regarding adequate public facilities. Staff's suggestive finding is that the proposed use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. Wastewater and water capacity are available, and on-site stormwater is proposed to address additional runoff. The Technical Review Committee recommends adoption of the use permit, subject to these conditions, that the application complies with all applicable review standards of the ordinance, that the applicant demonstrates the proposed use will meet their use permit review standards of the ordinance, and the conditions of approval necessary to ensure compliance with the ordinance and to prevent or minimize adverse effects of a development application on surrounding lands include, one, and this was discussed in some, it was discussed at the last meeting where this project was heard, that side setbacks shall be a minimum of 15 feet for principal structures, and staff is asking for a clarification on that proposed condition, and then also that a fee in lieu is required and shall be paid prior to final plat. So the board did discuss the side setbacks during the hearing on February 17th, and I just wanted to share a couple of sections from the UDO, so you can think about those when you're making a recommendation on the setback requirement. One is the setback exemptions that are allowed per the ordinance. So handicap ramps, fences, walls, water-dependent features, landscaping features, such as arbors, trellises, ornamental pools, et cetera, public utility lines, pump or well covers, residential heating and air equipment, flagpoles, mailboxes, or other non-habitable structures of 25 square feet in size or less may encroach into a required setback. And then the allowable, so those are actually just exempted from the setback requirement. And this next section talks about building and site features that are allowed to encroach a certain amount, depending on whether they're permeable or not. So eaves, gutters, canopies, chimneys, bay windows, and similar building features that do not impede the flow of stormwater may encroach into a required setback up to three feet. And porches, decks, patios, steps, sidewalks, and similar site features may encroach into a required setback, provided they are uncovered, do not extend above the first habitable floor of the building, and do not impede the flow of stormwater. And these site features may encroach into a required setback by up to three feet for impervious and five feet for pervious site features. That's all I have.
So if we included that in the motion this evening, allowing a 15-foot setback, and with the exceptions noted here, you guys would be okay with that, I figure?
That would be one solution.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Turner?
Did we talk about that last time on the setback with Ms. Turner?
We did, but wasn't real clear what was.
Impervious and.
Yeah, what was allowable and not allowable. We were talking about fences and swimming pools and some of the other features that the homes may have that would be within that 15 foot. I think Commissioner Beaumont brought up some good points about fire access and things of that nature, concerns over having plenty of right-of-way through there between these homes.
Because one of the conditions that was originally put on the amended sketch plan was the 15-foot setback, but then staff needed clarification, whether it was just principal structures or these accessory, some of these accessory uses that does have, that do have exemptions within our ordinance.
So I think if our memory serves, Commissioner Beaumont, you were really, really concerned, I think, about more about fences and things of that nature that would hamper, in addition to just the proximity of these large structures, but.
I think the big concern was elevated structures that could potentially allow fire to jump from building onto structure onto the next building in the lot beside. So I don't think, patios, I don't think are an issue, steps, I don't, sidewalks, I guess porches, if they were covered, I think would be a risk, but. Because it depends on the size of the porch.
Well, it says they have to be uncovered in Part B.
Right. Porches, decks, patios, similar site features being encroached, uncovered, provided they are uncovered.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Wasn't that different last time?
I don't think Jenny got into quite this far last time.
Maybe we didn't get into the nitty-gritty of it.
Yeah.
Right, there was just discussion over.
Discussion, and I think this helps clear up what is and isn't allowed for us to get a better picture.
Because typically, there's a setback for your principal structure, and then there's accessory structure setbacks. So the, this exemption and these encroachments will be allowed in either scenario, but if the board decides that it's 15 feet for any of those things, then these exemptions could apply to the 15-foot setback only.
Okay.
I think these, I think the exemptions would be fine.
For example, typically, a pool deck would have a 10-foot side setback, the way the ordinance reads now, and be able to encroach up to three feet into that if it were impervious and five feet.
It'd be 15 foot, allowed to encroach the same three feet or five feet.
Three or five, depending on the permeability.
Three, right.
Right.
What size were those lots again? I forgot.
Like half acre. Some of them more than that. A lot of the oceanfronts are closer to three quarters of an acre, .8.
Eight tenths.
Eight tenths, yeah. The oceanfronts are eight tenths, and the other side look like they're about half acre or a little bit more, maybe six tenths of an acre in most cases. Okay. Anything further, staff? All right. Thank you. Well, at this time, then I'll invite a representative up from the applicant.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Morrison. I am an attorney with the Twyford Law Firm in Moayak. I will be representing the developer. I am going to restrict my presentation solely to the issue of adjacent property values after the development. We are available to ask any other questions, and I will share with you that we're quite prepared to meet the 15-foot setback, as long as we get the same benefit that the UDO gives to everybody else on the 10 feet, which I believe Commissioner Beaumont said was agreeable. I would also share with you, we inquired of Chief Shortway about the necessity, how these things could interfere with his fire protection, not jumping from property to property, but I think it's the same thing. He says the general proposition, they don't fight fires from the rear of the property, because the county does not have the equipment to do that, to make use of the ocean, so that fighting a fire from the rear is not normally where they would be able to go with any assistance from the space back there. With that said, I think the best way to make the presentation, since this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and this is a very important issue, I will give you a thorough courtroom presentation, but brief. Unfortunately for me, since I'm charging by the hour.
Right, right, right.
I want to appreciate you for the two hours you took before I got up here.
Right, right.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
I would like to call Mr. Greg Born, who has been sworn, and then I'll stand right here. I believe my voice will carry, but if it does not, let me know, and I'll step to the microphone. Mr. Born?
Good evening.
All right, sir. Would you give the Commissioners your name and address?
Gregory Lee Born. I live at 4893 The Woods Road in Kitty Hawk.
How long have you lived on the Outer Banks?
I've been on the Outer Banks for 34 years.
What is your current occupation?
I am a professional real estate appraiser.
And the name of your company, please?
Born Appraisal Service.
And your educational background?
I have a finance degree from Virginia Tech.
Yes, Colonel, I would appreciate that. Are you licensed in North Carolina in any particular profession?
Yes, I am. I'm a general real estate, certified real estate appraiser.
When did you take that license?
I got it in the first wave of licensure back in 1991. I'm licensee number 215.
And are you licensed in any other states, or have you been licensed?
I was licensed in South Carolina and North, and in Virginia, but I've let those licenses expire and focus mainly here in North Carolina.
What training and testing, if any, is required in order to obtain this licensure?
You have to have your work product reviewed, you have to take an examination, you have to have a minimum number of years of experience, and you meet all those criteria, then you are given your licensure.
From your licensure until today, have you been subjected to any sanctions by your professional board?
I have not.
Now, let's talk about that experience. How long have you been doing real estate appraisals, regardless of when licensure was required?
34 years, since 1986.
And can you give us a very crude approximation of how many real estate appraisals you have done?
I've done a minimum of 2,800 appraisals.
And how many have you done on the Outer Banks in North Carolina?
I would say at least 75, 80% of those would be in either Dare or Currituck Counties.
Now, for whom have you worked?
I've worked for the NCDOT, I've worked for county governments, Currituck County, Dare County, the towns of Duck, Kitty Hawk, Killival Hills, Nagset, Camden County, Pass Matank County, the town of Hartford.
All right, I think you're showing off. Have you ever qualified as an expert before any court or administrative agency?
Yes, I have. I've been qualified in both Dare and Currituck Superior Courts, and also qualified in federal bankruptcy court in Raleigh, New Bern.
Now, have you ever engaged in determining values of a development with regard to whether they would adversely or positively impact the chase of property?
Yes, I have.
How frequently have you done that?
That is a probably, those kind of jobs are maybe 5% to 10% of my work product.
Have you done that over the period of time you've been practicing?
Yes, I do.
All right, so you're comfortable with the merit of the high notice?
Yes, sir.
All right, sir. Are you familiar with the property which is subject to review tonight on Pine Island?
Yes, I am.
And that would include the property as a development, is that correct?
That is correct.
And how is it that you familiarize yourself with this property?
I've reviewed all the plats, I've inspected the property, I've inspected the properties and neighborhood, looked over development plans, I'm familiar with Pine Island, I have appraised numerous phases in Pine Island over the years.
Are you familiar with the properties adjacent to this development?
Yes, I am.
Would you give us a brief description as to what is located north of the development?
Immediately to the north is the Hampton Inn, as well as three. Immediately to the north is Hampton Inn, as well as three other residential phases, also a, some larger residential house in Pine Island Estates, also there's a community facility with clubhouse, swimming pool, beach access, parking. To the south...
Before we do that, to the north, the property is highly developed for recreational, tourist purposes, rental purposes, to the same extent as the subject property, would you paraphrase?
Yes, it is.
All right, now, tell us about the property to the side.
To the south, you have three residential phases, primarily oceanfront lots with maybe some semi-oceanfront lots, but that's generally from the phases six through eight, all the way down to the North Carolina, I mean to the Currituck Dare County line.
These properties immediately adjacent to the side, are you familiar with any property owners?
The one property owner that has one immediately adjacent to the subject is, I may not pronounce his name right, Placa?
Would you spell that for me?
P-L-A-C-A.
All right, I believe that's the gentleman that had a question at the last meeting. Now, are you, you familiar with this property?
Yes, I am.
Could you compare it in size and use to the property that is being proposed with the well?
Generally, all the lots in Phase Six, on which his lot's part of, are single-family residential lots that are very similar to the ones that are proposed for Phase Five and mostly improved with vacation rental properties, nice, you know, homes that have been built on there.
All right, and was the size of these lots, sorry, does my mind use, but the size of these lots comparable to the proposed development?
Yes, they are.
All right, so now, based on all of that, do you have an opinion, premise on your training, experience, education, and licensure to a reasonable phasing property as to whether the proposed development would diminish the valuation of the adjacent properties to the north or to the side?
It is my opinion that the proposed project will not have an adverse impact on either the adjacent or abutting properties and is in harmony with the, the neighborhood in which it is located.
And how did you arrive at that?
I made an analysis of land sales of oceanfront properties, primarily within Pine Island, looking for such features as the adjacent, how adjacent a property is to a beach access versus a property that's not adjacent to a beach access.
Is that referred to as comparable, is that...
Yes, it is.
All right, would you explain to the Commissioners what comparable is not is?
Basically, what you do is you look at sales and you try to find a sale that is not impacted, in my case, I had over 50 sales that I looked at, but if you look at a sale that is not impacted by a walkway versus one that's right next to a walkway.
And are there other methods that can be used?
Yes, you can use a cost approach, primarily that's used for valuing approved property, same thing with an income approach.
All right, and did you make a determination that the comparables was the best, most reliable in this case?
Yes, I did.
And the three measures or the three methods of appraisal are the three that are routinely used in your profession, other professions?
That is correct.
All right. With that being said, I would tender to witness peasants' word, and I would also tender him to questions of staff, the Commissioners, or...
Okay, thank you. I do have a question for you. One of the things that was offered last time was a developer had proposed on the southern end to do a, just a sand walkover. If they were to build a wooden structure there or a nice raised platform walkover, would you view that as a deterrent or as an aesthetically pleasing thing to the...
You could do that, and in fact, if you look at all the existing beach accesses in Pine Island, they're all wooden walkways.
Okay, yeah, we'd hear some, some concern that that may detract from property values and since we have an expert here to talk about that.
That, that is the information I specifically looked at would say that it has no impact having a wooden walkway versus a sand walkway.
Okay, thank you.
Would that, if, would that be if it was a wooden walkway installed in that, would there be like a landscape buffering between that?
There'd be, and actually, if you looked at the, where they're talking, but I think we're talking specifically on the southern property line. If you look in within most of Pine Island, their walkways are 10 feet, lots right about each side. In this particular case, not only do you have in Phase Six, a 10-foot vegetated buffway, buffer within Phase Six, I think they have like ranges maybe about 25 feet on average buffer from the proposed walkway in the, in the Phase Five in the property to the south. So you have, you add the two together, about 35 feet.
So it's already buffered?
It's already buffered.
Okay, anything further from the board? Thank you very much, appreciate that. Looks like I have everybody sign up, sign up for the public comment, is pretty much everyone here representing tonight. I'm assuming you guys have, did you need to come up this evening? We'll ask Mr. Strater from Coibele to come up for just a minute. As we talked about with this wooden walkway, since you have the applicant here represented, Mr. Blizzard, are you guys okay if you did put, if we asked and made a condition of putting a wooden walkway in? I just see it as a better feature for the people that are on the, the western boundary to cross over, rather than trying to drag their stuff through the sand all the way over the dunes?
I believe I speak for applicant, applicant when I say that, yeah, we would be amenable to that. We would obviously permit it through CAMA.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, that was my big question for you, was just to make sure if I set that as a condition that you guys were okay with that, before we forced it on you, we would, we would want you to be okay with that. Mr. Morton?
Chairman, we have no objections to you making that a requirement, provided it's subject to CAMA approval, it's beyond our ability that we make a diligent and prompt effort to apply for the walkway to CAMA, but if they reject it, then we would not be buying by it.
Okay. Move that. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this agenda item this evening in the audience? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Any discussion from the board? All right, this time I will make a motion to approve PB 1990-07, Pine Island Phase 5D Preliminary Plat Use Permit with Staff Recommendations, because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the use permit review standards of the UDO. Conditions of our approval are, one, the applicant complies with all applicable review standards of the UDO, two, the conditions of approval necessary to ensure compliance with the review standards of the UDO and to prevent or minimize adverse effects of development application on surrounding lands, including, A, side setbacks shall be a minimum of 15 feet for principal structure and allowed structures as referenced here this evening by Ms. Turner and agreed to by the applicant. A fee in lieu is required and shall be paid prior to final plat. Additionally, on the south end of the property, proposed development, the approved walkover, wooden walkover for guests, provided they can get CAMA approval and any other permits required to construct the said walkway. One, the use will not endanger the public health or safety, the use conforms with adjacent land uses and consideration will be given through site plan design. Two, the use will not, will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The use will complement adjoining existing uses and the proposed single-family dwelling lots are equivalently sized to the adjoining subdivision and offer similar amenities. Three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans, specifically the 2006 land use plan classifies this site as full service within the Corolla subarea. The proposed use is consistent with the policies of that plan, including policy HM1. Currituck County shall encourage development to occur in densities appropriate for the location. Policy HM3, Currituck County shall especially encourage two forms of residential development, each with the objective of avoiding traditional suburban sprawl. This proposed subdivision meets open space developments that cluster homes on less land, preserving permanently dedicated open space and often employ on-site or community sewage treatment. Four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. Utility services are proposed for the site, wastewater and water capacity are available and on-site stormwater management is proposed to address additional runoff. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say it's good to see the dismal swamp philosopher back in his room.
Nice to be so high in the garden.
Yeah, cool.
You don't have to leave.
Right, all right, thanks.
You've bought the hour.
Right, all right. All right, I'm gonna call a brief recess. All right, folks, we'll be back in a minute.
They got the signs up on the...
Next item on the agenda, new business. Item A, consideration of an ordinance amending section 2-97 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to increase the number of connective term, connect, consecutive terms, a member, and connective could be the same thing, terms, a member...
Continue.
Somebody else wanna read this? All right, the number of consecutive terms a member of an authority, board or commission may serve. Who's getting that one tonight?
Mr. Chairman, this came out of your recent retreat and the board indicated this desire to amend your ordinance regarding service on boards from two consecutive terms to allow three consecutive terms. Very simply, this ordinance amendment changes section 2-97 in the appropriate places to accommodate that desire by the board. Be glad to answer any questions.
Move for approval.
I second. Paul?
I have a question.
Okay, any discussion? Now, discussion.
Do we not have someplace in here where when you go off as a county commissioner that you could not serve on the board?
No, because I was, I was on the parks and rentals.
Well, then, they're, they're...
There is, there's another provision in, in chapter two that provides that a member of the Board of Commissioners who is leaving office is not eligible to be appointed during a certain period of time to a county board authority or commission.
So, but it wouldn't...
That, that, that's not in this section and it does not apply here.
Okay, thank you.
What is it? Never mind, because we'll ask that question later.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Thank you. Item B, airport hangar lease agreement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've got William Nelson, the airport manager, here to present this item.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm here to present the airport ground lease. We did talk about, a little bit about this during the retreat, so looking at the consideration to, of approval for the lease that Ike's drawn up for us. We currently have an interested party in building a hangar on the airport property. If approved, this tenant will be bringing two aircraft to be housed in this hangar. This will bring two more aircraft that we currently don't have to our aircraft base list, which will help us justify the need for more grants in the future from Division of Aviation. This will also bring more property tax and revenue to the county. With the location we're proposing for the lease, this will allow for future development in that area. Are there any questions that you guys had about the land lease?
Pretty straightforward. Okay, thank you. I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll make the motion that the airport ground lease agreement be approved.
I second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Item C, consideration for approval of sand fencing grant program agreement. Getting that one, Mr. Stikelet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This agreement would basically set forth a program. We currently have it with dune grasses. This would allow homeowners or HOAs to install sand fencing. Essentially, the county would pick up the cost of the materials, installation would have to be done by either the HOA or the property owner. It has to be done in compliance with CAMA regulations, and we actually have a part of the agreement that actually lays out what, how to properly install sand fencing, because it's, it's not just put it up and forget it. So there's a whole...
That's what I've been doing wrong.
That's what you've been doing wrong, yes, sir. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has about this item.
None. I'll move to approve that.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Last item under new business, item E, consent agenda and...
Wait, is this for wildlife?
Yeah. Am I missing one?
Yes.
Nope, sorry.
D.
Happy checking. D, resolution opposing proposed rule changes for the NC Wildlife Resources Commission to move boundaries of inland waterways and coastal waters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Essentially, this is a resolution voicing our opposition to taking water that currently is under the jurisdiction of marine fisheries and putting it under the jurisdiction of the Wildlife Resources Commission. The reason that the county has opposition to this is that greatly would impact the commercial fisher, the commercial fisheries and watermen that are in our community, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I read somewhere where there's a question about the constitutionality of doing this. Can the county attorney address that?
I really haven't considered what constitutional issues might arise by this, unless it has something to do with, with these agencies, one, perhaps infringing, contrary to statute in some way, on, on the other, other agency's current jurisdiction.
Is this like discretionary authority? Is this not any power of the legislature to define, or does it give them, the agencies in question, the authority to define it?
Well, man, that, I don't know right offhand without looking at the statutes.
I can, I can answer that just a little bit. Essentially, there are, there's a rule set in place that every, I think it's five years, it could be 10, but every, over a period of time, Marine Fisheries and Wildlife Resources Commission, 10 years, has to examine their jurisdictional boundaries and determine if there are any changes. The way I understand this is this is the recommendation from Wildlife Resources Commission to a change. It wouldn't go into effect for several years, but we're trying to get ahead of it before it gets a full head of steam because of the detrimental impact that it would have.
So if they are making the recommendation, to whom are they making that recommendation? The legislature, the General Assembly?
The Marine Fisheries. And so, once the two agencies agree to it, that becomes the jurisdictional boundary.
So for, for, for the past multiple years, they've just left it alone, and I guess there's some, been some discussion, fishermen meetings and that, 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 that the wildlife might want to now take over and not be in agreement to keep them as they are, so they're getting, they wanted us to say something on their behalf of, to protect them and keep it the way it is without changing.
Between those two agencies?
It can't, it could be, if they don't agree.
So we don't know if the Marine Fisheries agree to it? They haven't opposed it?
They have not yet.
No, they haven't opposed it. This is just showing our support for our watermen and fishermen.
The, to get really into the minutia of the issue, there's been a push for several years by recreational fishermen in other parts of the state to restrict what kind of commercial fishing, fishing can happen in the estuary areas of North Carolina. They tried to do it through banning certain kinds of nets and doing other type of actions. They've done it through making certain products not profitable through very short, very small size limits, that kind of thing. What this would do is it's another way for recreational fishermen to kind of push the commercial interest out of certain waters.
This happens almost annually.
Yeah.
Almost annually. There was a fight probably three or four years ago where this exact, again, we, we had an op, a resolution opposing what was being proposed, so...
Like, you're like, where crab pops can be...
Correct, correct.
And then the flounder fish and everything else, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
And you're up.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, item E, the consent agenda, and we're gonna need to make a change to the consent agenda and pull out the sheriff's salary for discussion prior to approving the consent agenda.
I move we pull it out.
What's that?
I move we pull that section out.
You have a second.
Oh, to pull it out?
Yeah.
I'll second it for discussion, okay.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, so we'll have a discussion about Sheriff Matt Biker's salary. And with that, I'll look at Mr. Stikelet, he's gathered a little bit of information for us.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's before you tonight is a request to basically provide, to make the sheriff part of the career development plan that the sheriff's department employees, sheriff's office employees currently have. If you remember during the budget sessions, the board approved... If you remember during the budget sessions, the board approved to essentially take an intermediate certification to, from two percent to four percent, approved to take an advanced certification from two percent to four percent. And on top of that, the sheriff has, is not part of the longevity program that the county currently has as a career development plan, what we call the career development plan that all employees other than elected officials are part of. The sheriff's salary is set outside of the salary grade and step table, and it has to, the amount has to specifically be part of a motion that is put forward by the board. The reason that, the way that the amount that is currently in the agenda was arrived at, we took the current base salary of eighty-eight thousand seven dollars, and then when you figure in a twenty-two-year longevity increase, that's an increase of twelve thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. The intermediate increase is three thousand five hundred and twenty, and the advanced law enforcement certification increase would be another three thousand five hundred and twenty, which brings the total salary up to one hundred and seven thousand three hundred and sixty-seven. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that the board may have about this issue.
You're saying we're giving a longevity. Are we gonna start giving that to other elected officials?
What I looked at, well, first of all, that would really be up to the Board of Commissioners if you wanted to extend that. So, that would be, essentially, you have, if you didn't include the Board of Commissioners in that, you'd have the registered deeds and the clerk of court, I believe, would be the other employees that could potentially fall under that.
Clerk, clerk is a state employee.
Clerk, that's right, yeah, that's a state. So, yeah, it'd just be registered deeds and the sheriff that's set by the Board of Commissioners. A little bit of background, like I said, this all kind of wraps around the issue of the career development plan implemented over the rest of the sheriff's office. This is just a number I'm bringing forward. This is really a matter between this elected board and the elected position of the sheriff. So, this is just what, if you included the entire career development plan, that's the number that you would get to.
I'm certainly not against the sheriff. I think anybody in law enforcement does a great job. Our sheriff was elected, and he paid a filing fee of eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-one cent. So, that meant he made eighty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. Here, you're listing he is making eighty-eight thousand seven dollars. So, since he was sworn in over a year and three months ago, he's making a thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars more.
I believe that that is a byproduct, and this predates me a little bit. I believe there was a COLA given that went into effect July of two thousand and eighteen, and I think that that's...
He was acting sheriff in June of two thousand and eighteen, so that's probably where the difference was.
And so, that, that's, I think that's how the amount increased from the eighty-six to the eighty-eight. I'm positive it was due to a COLA.
Yeah.
I'm positive, actually, that it was during July one, two thousand and eighteen it went into effect.
There was a two percent.
So, we're thinking about giving him a nineteen thousand three hundred and sixty-dollar raise.
If, if the, if the board decided to apply the entire career development plan to the sheriff's salary, that's what it would equal, yes, ma'am.
So, with all the problems with the coronavirus, we don't know what that holds. We're getting ready to do revaluation. I certainly feel like when we have a issue like this, it should be handled at budget time, not in the middle of a time that's not budget, so we can see how it's gonna affect the county. We've got people in this, and everybody knows we're getting ready to, we're in the process of doing a pay study, right?
Yes, ma'am.
The lower third?
The lowest third group of employees is currently going through a pay study.
So, we've got people, the lowest pay grade in our county is twenty-four thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. A basic fireman starts at thirty thousand two hundred and four dollars. I just cannot see giving somebody a nineteen thousand dollar raise. When he filed for the sheriff, he knew what the salary was. There's been some discussion because we gave the other people in the department raises that now they're not equal.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, finish.
So, for us to be treating somebody who's making right now eighty-eight thousand dollars and not looking at these people who are living paycheck to paycheck, I have a real problem with it, a serious problem.
So, Mr. Stikelet, go ahead, Kevin.
If I may, my main thing, like you said, when the career development thing, it first came out in two thousand and three, and then it was relooked at in two thousand and eighteen. You know, and it's obvious, he's my boss, so I'm not like sitting up here politicking for my boss, but I have an issue with number two making more than number one. You know, I mean, like you said, and I'm not knocking number two, you know, I'm not knocking number one, I'm just saying like, you know, an assistant or number two typically don't make more than number one. That's my, you know, and I don't know what the dollar amount, where, what that number came to, that was not me. But, you know, I mean, like I said, far as the career development and all that kind of stuff, the training hours, you know, I mean, our sheriff, he's, we have two at our agency that have been to the FBI National Academy, and that's something that less than one percent of law enforcement goes to, you know, statewide. The average salary for North Carolina chief of police or sheriffs, and like I said, I'm just putting these numbers out there, and I looked this stuff up, you can look on my phone if you wanna check, anybody can get the Google, but the, the average salary is a hundred and five for chiefs and sheriffs, and like, you know, I mean, I'm just, far as the career development thing, I think when they, that was re, readdressed during budget time, I think that he thought he was part of that.
Didn't we readdress that right recently, this past fall?
The, the career development, the board made modifications to the sheriff's office career development plan, changing the intermediate certification from two to four percent and advanced certification from two to four percent as we headed into the nineteen-twenty budget.
Right.
Yeah.
So, Kevin, to Kevin's point, Commissioner McCord's point, and I was gonna ask you this, I'd asked you earlier to compile the information, just look at some of the sheriff's deputies, excuse me, sheriffs in our, in our area and the range for the population density here, and see where he landed, where the, where the proposed salary landed. And I believe you have some of that information, if you would share that.
I do have some information. So, to give you an idea, the nearest neighbor to us, Deere County, has got a, their sheriff makes ninety-seven thousand. That population, forgive me, I'm looking at the school of government website, is thirty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty.
And he has six municipalities, too.
As far as other situated communities that have a similar population, probably the closest one to us currently is Anson County, which is beside a Union County near Mecklenburg. That sheriff makes ninety-six thousand dollars as well.
And there were several of them, though, that were over a hundred, was there not?
Vance County, which has more people but is in the same population group that the school of government lumps us into, they're at a hundred and two thousand dollars. And like I said, it's...
And these counties also have municipalities to help with their...
We have two troopers.
They, they do. I mean, Currituck County is uniquely situated in a lot of ways, not just law enforcement and the fact that we do not have a municipality. So, you know, Deere County, and, and I'm gonna look to the county attorney, because he probably knows the number off the top of his head, has six municipalities.
Yeah, they do most of the grunt work.
But like I said, I'm, I'm really not here to advocate one way or the other, I'm just...
My only thing is, you typically don't supervise somebody that makes six thousand dollars a year more than you, just, that's my only, my only thing, and that's...
You're, you're at a kind of awkward position because you are a deputy sheriff.
I'm a sergeant there, yeah.
So, I think it's hard, kinda hard for you to be objective.
But it doesn't affect my, my direct salary or anything.
It does affect, if, if you talk against it, it does affect maybe how your sheriff...
I'm not, I'm not talking against her, his salary or the one oh seven or whatever it is, but nobody typically supervises somebody that makes less, you know, you don't supervise somebody and they make more money than you typically. That's, that's all I'm saying.
I would offer that...
That happens quite a bit.
Just go with firing EMS. Does Riley have, you know, I mean, and I'm just using that. Kevin, I've worked for a multitude of organizations, and I normally have somebody that makes more than I do. And I was the head, I was the program manager over mega-million contracts. So, that, that to me is not the reasoning by which a salary is set, because I gotta make more than the person below. Because if that was the philosophy, and here's kind of my issue, if the sheriff's pay raise and quals had been rolled into our discussion at last budget time, would we have guaranteed, voted the way we did, to approve all that we approved for the sheriff's department, knowing that, well, if we do this, we're gonna have to bump the sheriff's salary up as well, because we don't want him making less? And I would just suggest that I appreciate what Kitty's bringing up, and I too think Matt does a great job, and so does Jeff and the rest of the sheriff's department, but I agree, we're in weird waters right now with the COVID.
I agree.
And with the, and we're on the, we're on the threshold of our budget discussion. I, I would like to see us table this for now as we go into the budget, because we have no idea what next year's budget's gonna look like.
And we have no idea what reevaluation's gonna look like either.
Well, we won't have that at the budget either. But, but my point is, there are a lot of unknowns. We have no idea what this economy's about to do, none. And I think, given what the county is facing right now, I would suggest that we, we table this and bring it up during the normal budgeting process, and then we can have that discussion and revisit that, that topic.
I just have a, a very, very serious problem when I know there are people in this county living paycheck to paycheck. And when you've got somebody's making twenty-five thousand dollars, and we're getting ready to give somebody an increase of close to twenty thousand over a twenty-two percent increase...
I don't think that's, that's fair, Commissioner McCord. I mean, that, he has twenty-three years' experience as a law enforcement officer, a multitude of hours and training behind him.
He's got double what I got.
And so, you're not comparing apples to apples. He's also responsible for, how many?
A hundred and five people plus fifty to sixty inmates.
Right.
So, he oversees a hundred and seventy people.
So, it's not, it's not, it's not the same thing. I understand, I was that guy at one point in my life, making that kind of money, and it's hard. I had to do it as a young man, but it's not, it's not an apples-to-apples thing, and I think, you know, that was the point of me asking Mr. Stikelet to look at the comps, if you will, where sheriffs are at in this type of situation with this, with this number of people in the county. Most of them have municipalities, so they have police departments doing what they need to do, as opposed to the sheriffs acting as the police and courts and the jail, and seventy thousand people a week coming in here during the summer. So, we are a totally unique situation. He's gone above and beyond with creation of, and I think Commissioner Jarvis can speak to this, if you wanted to, about the, see, junior?
And, and I will just say, I was in meet, two different meetings this week, and people from outside of the county both pointed to the sheriff, Matt Bykert, as the reason our county is the way it is. On Monday, talking about recidivism and juvenile offenders, they specifically singled him out. Then on Tuesday, at the human trafficking meeting and presentation, they also singled him out and talked about his work with that. So, he, he certainly has been given credit from many different organizations outside of our county for the work he's done, and I, and I really do appreciate the fact that it is a different job he does than many sheriffs in that there are no municipalities in this county, so he is, his department is the face of all law enforcement in the county.
And he does a great job. I certainly go along with that. But he's been in office a year and three months. He knew what he was making when he signed up for the job.
Like I said, he's a twen, and I mean, I'm not saying a dollar number, I didn't know it was gonna be the one oh seven or whatever, and like I said, I'm just saying, and maybe in your scenario, my lead guy that works for my company doesn't make, you know, my number two don't make more than my number one, but I, that's my only thing on it, you know, like you said, and, I mean, it's not like he's a brand-new sheriff, he's worked here for twenty-three years.
He was interim sheriff for...
He was interim sheriff for seven months, six months?
Yeah, so, I don't know, it just, it's, it's the, the amount of what he's accomplished in a very short, in eighteen months, two years really, I guess at this point, two and a half years that he's been acting sheriff and sheriff, it's pretty, pretty astonishing what he's been able to do.
I got a question for Mr. County Manager. The, the proposed increase with the percentages based on everything, if, if this were to pass tonight, what would be the next criteria for any or if any more increases would be based on longevity at that point or anything else? The county would have to approve anything else in the future?
So, the sheriff's salary specifically gets set by the board, so if, if he did get to another longevity mark at that point, either you could make a motion tonight with a dollar amount and to include him in the longevity program, as long as he's the sheriff, or you could make a motion just for a dollar amount and then revisit it the next time a longevity increase threshold was hit.
The elected officials, do they get cost, they get cost of living, don't they?
No, it gets cost of living, but not...
Yeah, so what this also, I know Paul doesn't, you know, fixes the disparity between the deputy sheriff and the sheriff, kinda going forward, like Jeff will not be able to pass, surpass him at this point, which we've seen happen, and what, on longevity and things of that nature. I believe you looked into that as well.
They both have, I mean, both of their longevity is gonna move, I mean, even if one gets one before the other, the longevity increase is typically, I think, three percent, and so you probably would not have, you would not have, a three percent increase would not bump the chief deputy over the sheriff, as long as they're, they're both the same people, because one might get one this year, but in two years, the next person would get a longevity if the board sets the, the motion that way.
And were you able to find out what the deputy sheriff's salary was? Did you have a chance to look at that?
Chief deputy? I can look that up if you, if you give me one second.
Then, so...
The chief deputy? The chief deputy's salary is set through the budget process and an increase due to the career development plan that was approved in the budget.
When he got the job, there was a low end and a high.
He'd been here twenty-two years, and he was a high.
Let me look up this step, because I think I understand what you're asking. Typically, in positions, you come in at, at step three of whatever grade, so let me, I'll check that while I look at the total salary number, give me...
His salary, you can look it up on the county website, his salary's ninety-four thousand.
So, is, is this, if we make this motion, is this fixing any sheriff's salary at a hundred and seven thousand dollars, or is it...
Just his.
So, the, the board has the ability and has done it in the past to, to basically pass a resolution heading into an election, and there's rules around when you have to pass it, that essentially can set the salary for an elected position ahead of time. So, you can set it and say that this is gonna be the salary, and then you can change it if the incumbent wins, and Ike can give you a lot more detail on that process if you'd like it.
That's right, and you've done it several times for the registered deeds position, recognizing there may be someone with less years of experience or no experience that might be elected to the position, and so you adopted that resolution lowering the salary.
When we did that, that time, it was the little bit above the average of the area of local register of deeds.
Right.
But it was considerably less than the outgoing...
Than the incumbent, yes.
But it was due to her longevity, by the former registered deeds.
No, over salary increases granted by the Board of Commissioners.
And cost of living.
No, it was no longevity added into it other than what she normally got. Her salary was increased, and Commissioner filed and usually made the motion to increase her salary.
I mean, if you gave a, to one resident, I mean, you'd have to give it to both elected, or is it two or three people?
There's two elected officials. What I was gonna say, if we're gonna look at longevity for elected officials, if there's two, we probably should, I think we should look at both of them then, if that's what we're gonna do.
Do we, do we know the, going back to the, the pay increases for quals, that the, the premise by which the professional enhancement pay raises were brought to this board were to help with retention?
That's correct.
Do we remember what the retention number was prior to the incentives or in the enhancement, salary enhancements?
We're talking about prior to two thousand and three?
No.
No, recently.
This was last budget year.
I can't remember, I, I think that the, if I remember correctly, the discussion was based around they didn't want to start a retention problem. They didn't have...
But what, what did we, do you remember the number?
Not off the top of my head, no, sir.
I remember a five percent number being spoken of as annual losses, and, you know, as... I remember a 5% number being spoken of as annual losses, and, you know, as the fire EMS commissioner, I'm going to tell you, we are losing, we are hemorrhaging people in the fire EMS. If we had half of what we have today, it would still exceed what the sheriff's department is seeing. I, I again would suggest that this should be part of a budget discussion as we go forward. I, I would caution us to make a salary, because again, I think Matt's doing a great job, there's nothing tearing down what he's done with the local communities. I, you know, to reiterate what Kitty said, his salary was not a surprise to him, that's what the salary was when he ran for office and was elected to that position. So it's not like the county changed the deal, but I think it's part of a larger discussion that, that we're going to need to have. I, I know in talking with the county manager, we're going to be stressed with salary, with, not with salaries, but we're going to be stressed financially this year, and so we're fighting to keep our taxes low, we don't know what's going on, and I would just urge caution at doing a pay raise outside of the normal budgetary cycle.
Um, I have the initial data that was requested, the chief deputy, because of the career development, is it a step nine, so probably was brought in at a step three, but after you figure in the career development stuff for advanced certifications and intermediate certifications, that takes you up to a step nine.
And has he got his college degree too?
Okay, and yeah, there are increases if you have certain degrees, and the total sal, annual salary is $92,660. It's what we have in our financial software, so. And I can try to find the, um, the turnover rate that was presented, it would take just a little bit of time, but.
All right, so, um, one of the things about this is, the number that was come up with was just applying those things, and that's why I wanted the deputy sheriff's current pay structure where he was at, because we don't necessarily have to go to 107, it could be 94,000. If, if, if the concern of the board is to have that disparity go away and put him more in line with reasonably what the salaries are, then, then getting into the low 90s or mid 90s accomplishes that, and it's, it's not a huge budgetary impact for us of, if it's $5,000 or $6,000.
Paul, does that amount bother you?
I, I think it, we're in the middle of the budget cycle, I, I think any number, any things like this that are taken out of the normal budget, I, I mean, we're taking something and it's an admirality, we normally look at an entire department's budget when we do things, and again, the, the retention rate in the sheriff's department, you know, bunch of great guys, I, you know, we were, we are preventing a retention issue successfully, meanwhile, we're hemorrhaging in another department, and it is, it is costing this county in, in resources and, and financially. I just, I, I like, I think that was a more reasonable number, certainly, but again, I would like to see it discussed in the whole of the budget of the county.
Well, there's one thing you can look at also, if you were to table it, continue it into the budget discussion, there's nothing to say, it's just three months till July 1, make it retroactive to April 1. If the budget comes in and everything is looking better at that time, you could always go back those three months to some dollar figure, whatever the board would want to do.
There's a possibility of it staying the same too, then?
Yeah. You have that flexibility, I would believe.
I, I don't know what the, what the huge hurry is, and I, I, again, we don't normally have salary discussions of elected officials, although there's only two of them, until it's budget year. And I've been here since our register of deeds was elected the first time, and there were pushes for pay raises all along, and it was only until this last time, after having served in that role for six years, that we did that. And this, to me, and looking at this, this was a self-induced condition in that, based upon the presentation by, that was prepared by Matt and delivered by Jeff Walker about, you know, here's the quals, here's what we'd like to do, again, the sheriff should have been included in that discussion as part of, and this will then cause the sheriff, if that had been done, I think then, you know, we could all live with that, accept that. I, I just, I, I don't like doing things like this out of a normal budgetary cycle when we're right in the middle of it.
County Manager, have we, have we with any type of employee, whether elected or not, made salary adjustments during the course of the year before budget cycle, during the study, or some means of necessity?
Oh, we have, um, we've made adjustments to, to salaries, we made an adjustment at the last meeting, even though there's not an employee in that position right now, to the assistant finance director's salary because we had a problem with recruitment. There's an item on the agenda tonight, actually, where I made a mistake and forgot to recognize that we had a organizational shift for our public works director who became a department head, which is a higher level of authority, so there's a grade change proposed for that position. So it, it does occur.
Yeah, but, and I'll go back, that title changed based upon, right, a bunch, you know, circumstances, and that, that would suggest that if I, you know, am a, a position six, and then next week get promoted to a position seven, that's not a salary change, that's jumping into a different role and a different responsibility.
It is, and like I said, that one's on me whenever I prepared the budget, I did miss that one, so I don't want to make it sound like that these two things are necessarily related, they're separate issues.
So was that position funded in the budget?
No.
The, the.
Jump up.
The jump up, that position is going to, is able to be funded in this year's budget because we have so, we have lapped salary because we can't recruit public works employees because of the salary. The same, there's, there's lapped salary that would cover the sheriff as well, that's why there's not a budget amendment associated with either one of these, so, just to make that clear.
But in the other one, we can't fill a position, right? That's part of why we're adjusting salaries is because we've got holes.
That's correct.
That we can't fill.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion? Now, we'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we table this pay rate, pay raise until we enter our budgetary, until we have our budgetary discussion specifically about the sheriff's department.
Okay, do we have a second? Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Uh, anyone else want to draw for another motion this evening?
I'm sorry, could I get the vote on, on those?
Five to two. Five, nay over here.
Again, I, well, I got a question for the county manager again, then, can you refresh my memory, if we, if we did everything without longevity, how much would that get him, or would that put him at the top of the department at that time?
You're going to have to give me a second to do a little bit of math on a calculator.
It'd be, it'd be 8% if you took out the longevity, 8% of whatever the salary.
Kevin apparently has the stuff and it just.
So, um, it's.
That was in my head.
It'd be, it'd be $7,040 extra dollars if you just did for the intermediate, it'd be $7,040 for the intermediate and advanced increases. The current base salary is $88,007, so when you add.
Put some on 75.
It takes them to 9547 is what I've got, which essentially would put him, um, a little under, a little, somewhere around $2,500 more than the chief deputy.
Okay.
So then, so then at the budget work session, we could potentially look at longevity for both elected positions and see what that cost would implement at that time, and possibly add that longevity for both elected officials, and have that discussion for longevity at that time.
If you give it a one, you got to give.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so that we could bring it up at the budget session at that time.
You could.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and make a, turn your mic off. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, then, that we, um, we go ahead and look at the sheriff's increase, excluding longevity at this time, to bring it up at the, at the budget meeting to include the, what is it, it would be an 8% increase at this time, and look at the longevity portion at a later date.
So you want to set the salary at what you have written down there?
Um, yes, sir, that would make the salary then 95,047, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, that's my motion.
Okay, thank you.
Does that include the effective starting date, April 1?
Oh, yeah, we do need to set that.
From a payroll perspective, actually, we don't want to set it on April 1, we want to set it on the start of the, of a pay period, give me just a second. So it would be, for, from a finance perspective, it would be easiest to set it, set it at an effective date of, um, April 30th, or March 30th.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make my, amend my motion to make the effective date, um, March 30th.
Thank you. Do we have another second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All right, motion carries four to two, or five to two, excuse me. You got it, everybody?
I want the rest of the consent agenda.
Thank you, um, now we need to, uh, do the rest of the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Selena, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing not a care in unanimously, I'll recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and open the special meeting of the Tours and Development Authority, and the first item is a budget amendment for the TDA.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this essentially recognizes extra occupancy tax we had, that we had come in, and then budgets it as an expenditure for capital outlay to cover the cost of the part of the horse fence from the end of the marine side essentially up to the cattle grate. Be happy to answer any questions that folks have about that.
Did we get, um, do we get any, do you know if we got any applicants in on that yet? I know they were, or.
The, the number here is set based on the bids that came in.
Okay.
We, I think we had two bidders.
Okay, all major approve.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, this time I'll look for a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Just one question on that real quick.
Yes, sir.
What is the timeframe on construction, have they given us that?
I hate to give any timeframes on construction currently with the situation that we're in with, with society.
Same.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just wanted that to clarify for the public.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Uh, how about Mr. Kitty on that one? How about a second? Kevin for the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, um, we're going to reconvene the regular meeting and move to go into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county attorney and to preserve attorney-client privilege in the matter entitled 85 and Sunny LLC v. Currituck County. Second, second, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.